We're a little bit early here, but we'll call a Shakopee City Council meeting to order for February 6th, 6th, 2024. Please take the roll.
Councilmember Delaney. Councilmember Whiting. Councilmember Contreras. Councilmember Lara. Mayor Lehman.
Item number two, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Three, approval of the agenda, any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, from staff, we'll pull 9C1, which is the 2023 Police Department Annual Report, and you will hear that at the next meeting. And also on the consent business, we'll be pulling off 4A4, which is a THC license for TopStar Market, and 4A6, which is a THC license for Nicolet Tobacco, and that's off of consent, and then it will become on the regular agenda.
Okay. Any changes from council of the agenda? Mr. Whiting?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as modified.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Contreras. Any discussion on the motion? Discussion, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number four, consent to business, which has been modified to remove 4A4 and 4A6. Any other changes to the consent agenda from council? Changes from council? Mr. Reynolds, would you please read the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. These are the consent agenda items for the Shakopee City Council meeting on February 6th of 2024. 4A1 are the city council minutes, 4A2 is the Microsoft Enterprise License Agreement, 4A3 is a change to city council meeting dates due to elections, 4A5 approves a special event and temporary liquor license for the Shakopee Chamber and Visitors Bureau, 4A7 approves a tobacco license for Shein Property Management LLC doing business as Shakopee Outlet Plus, 4A8 is an appointment of a new director of Parks and Recreation, 4A9 approves an on-sale and Sunday liquor licenses for Global Restaurant Group doing business as Dangerfields Restaurant, 4A10 is the Scott County Public Health Statewide Health Improvement Partnership Grant Award, 4B1 is Eagle Creek Boulevard and Veerling Drive Roundabout Contract Award, 4B2 is a professional services agreement with AE2S for the L-16 Levy Rehab, 4B3 approves plans and authorizes bidding for the 2024 Batumins Pavement Rehabilitation Projects, 4C1 is an acceptance of donation and sponsorship funds, 4D1 is a contract with WSB for design of Valley Crest Trail Connection, 4D2 is an award of contract for Block for Sand Venture to Old Castle, and 4E1 is vehicle and equipment purchases for our Public Works Department.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, consent agenda as modified, has been adopted. Item number five is recognition of citizens of Shakopee that...
We don't have the motion.
Don't have, okay.
No. There was no motion.
It was a motion for the agenda.
I apologize. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion for the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilor Contreras, seconded by Councilor Delaney.
Mr. Reynolds, read it again.
Yeah, anybody didn't hear that wonderful reading by Mr. Reynolds? Two items were removed, 4A46. In a motion and a second? Yes? Discussion on the motion? Discussion, seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion passes. My apologies, I'm getting ahead of myself. Item number five, recognition of residents of Shakopee that wish to address the city council on an item that is not on our agenda. If you're here for an item that is not on the agenda, now would be the time. Seeing none, we will move on to item number six, business removed from consent, will be discussed at this time. Two items were removed from consent, that's item 4A4, 4A6. Technical question for staff or legal, do we do these one at a time, or do we combine them?
I do them one at a time.
Okay, we'll take 4A4 first. 4A4 is denial of a THC license, TopStar Market LLC, and who is discussing this one on our behalf?
Could we...
Please have a seat at the table here.
This is for staff, right? Were you asking staff?
Yeah, I was asking if there was staff that was going to present on this?
There's really not much to present from staff's perspective, Mayor, just simply the application came in, doesn't fall within the bounds of our ordinance, and TopStar and Nicolet Tobacco both have requested to talk to council prior to making a decision.
Very good. Go ahead.
One question I want, Nicolet and TopStar are both the same ownership, just two different locations under two different licenses, we're handling them under two different agenda items, same owner. Correct.
Correct.
Thank you.
But the, any violations would be two separate ones on two separate licenses.
Okay.
Correct. Apologize, sir, if you can go ahead and pull that microphone close if you need to.
Real close.
It does move. Your name...
I'm pretty low, but I can use a microphone, yes.
Thank you. Welcome, and by all means, if we can get your name.
Yes, so my name is Benjamin Shield from Gregerson, Rossow, Johnson, and Nyland. I'm here with Sinéd, also known as Sonny, who owns both TopStar and Nicolet, on his, I guess, his license to sell THC at both stores.
Okay.
So I would like to address kind of why Sinéd believes that he should be granted these license, and why he finds or feels that he was not breaking the moratorium at the time back when it was put in place. So a little backstory on both TopStar and Nicolet, and would you like me to do both, or...
Let's do TopStar, item 4A4 specifically, because I think you can talk specifically to any disqualifying reasons that are stated, compliance checks, whatever, to that specific one.
Sure.
Adopted ordinance.
Okay. So a little backstory on TopStar here, he was open back in 2009 with his father, and 2016, Sinéd actually took over the ownership for a contract for deed, and has been operating since with his father as more in a management role. This is a family-owned business and has been for a very long time, it's been part of the community for a very long time, and we believe both that it serves a good purpose for the community. Now, moving forward to the moratorium which was put into place back in 2022, there was an ordinance that was passed that prevented the sale of THC products, specifically ones that have TETRA-8, Delta-9 cannabinoids, and when there was a compliance check by the city police department back on November 16th, 2022, I apologize, November 17th, 2022, it was noted that they failed that compliance check. Now, Mr. Mansara, I mean, even speaking with him for an hour, it became evident that he knows the rules, he's very, I guess, he understands what him and his business needs to do to comply with them, so upon reading the memorandum, it was his understanding that he could still sell Delta-8 and Delta-10, and the moratorium really applied to Delta-9. So when he was given that initial citation, he did pull all Delta-9 products, and the product that was bought on November 17th, 2022, was actually a Delta-8 and Delta-10 byproduct that had no Delta-8 THC in it. This case was actually forwarded to the county attorney's office and was heard, and upon the evidence that was presented, the court found that it didn't run afoul of the rules at the time, that both Delta-8 and Delta-10 were legal before the moratorium. And looking at the requirements of the moratorium, it does have an exception that allows the sale of previously allowed THC products prior to the ordinance, and that would be section five, which reads, "The moratorium imposes by this ordinance does not apply to the sale of medical cannabis or hemp products that were lawful to sell prior to the effective date of this act." And looking at the statutes, back when it was imposed, Minnesota laws 2022, Chapter 9, 8, HF number 4065, allowed the sale, or allowed the sale of hemp drive products, which would be Delta-8 and Delta-10, but not the sale of Delta-9, which when the ordinance check was done on TopStar, the product that was purchased did not have any Delta-9, and that is why the court found that it must dismiss the case because it didn't contain these products. And I do have a picture here of the product that was purchased from his store that shows that it has no Delta-9 in it, and it only has Delta-8 and Delta-10.
Question, when it's, when you refer to a picture that says it shows this, is that a labeling that shows that? Is that a...
Test results.
A test result, scientific test result?
It does. So per the requirements for labeling, this was the exhibit that was submitted to the court with the THC product that was purchased from his store back on November 17th, 2022. So it shows the nutritional facts, it shows the contents of what's located in it, and it specifically states that it does not have any of this Delta-9.
Mr. Whiting?
I'm not sure if you're aware of this, excuse me, or if staff may know, how many times has TopStar been cited in a compliance check for selling tobacco or THC to a minor?
I believe I can have Sinéd answer that one.
Zero.
How many times have they been convicted of an employee selling marijuana out of the back door?
Um...
Yeah.
I'm not aware.
So it's known for, before legal weed, we had issues. I'm not, I'm not sure about the minors selling, I think we're splitting hairs with Deltas, but go ahead.
If I can speak to that, too, and I think Sinéd would be a very good person to speak to that, before that, Sinéd, I would say...
Let's, let's, let's continue on with your line of comments, specifically on 4A4 first, and if there's questions beyond that from council for others, we'll address it at that time, okay?
Of course. So we would like to address the sale, this did happen back in 2017, and during the sting operation that surrounded his brother at the time, Sinéd was not implicated, or his store, in any of that activity. Talking with Sinéd, reading through the reports, he had no idea that any of this was being, or even transpired. His brother at the time did work at the store, Sinéd manages the store along with his dad, but to any knowledge that he had with illegal activities happening outside the store, he personally did not have any knowledge of that. And I would like to speak to his, or on behalf of his brother, he's had some trouble in the past, I would note that this did happen back in 2017, and since that time, I would like to note that he has gone to an extensive treatment facility after going to prison for this bust back in 2017, and has since honestly been an upstanding citizen. He, from what I believe was married, became married, had a kid, and now he works in the community, then has not had any incidents since. So I, we do acknowledge the fact that this store has had some negatively implications concerning the sale of marijuana, but I would note that it was not Sinéd that was selling it or had knowledge of it, and the person that was involved, albeit it was his brother, has kind of made up for his actions in the past, and has quite frankly turned his life around. So any implications that this would have in effect going forward, I believe shouldn't have a bearing on the decision today for Sinéd to sell these legal products going forward.
Okay, back to, I'm taking notes, so if I'm not looking while you're speaking, it's because I'm taking notes, no disrespect. The ordinance, and Shakopee ordinance was passed in what month in '22?
August of 2022.
So that was passed prior to the violation in December, November 17th? Okay. And there's eight, nine, and 10, 10 and nine and eight were legal prior to August 22, is what you're saying?
Prior to August of 2022, it was legal to sell Delta-8 and Delta-10, which are non-live resin hemp-derived THC products.
Okay, which is what I said, but Delta-9 was not legal, correct?
Delta-9 was not legal, correct. That did not become legal until June of 2023.
Okay, and, and the product that you have pictures of, who verified the product?
It would be the officer that's...
I mean, our officer's not a scientist, so, did you take that product and test it to see what its composition was, to make it was consistent with what the ingredients said on the packaging?
I do not believe they did that during the court case.
Do we know where it was packaged?
It's Eric Bryan, it's a national company out of Texas.
Sir, if you're going to speak, you need to come up to the microphone, please.
Correct.
If I sit next to you?
Yes.
I, it does note on the packaging that it was distributed by Lift Made in Kenosha, Wisconsin.
Okay, continue, please. Do you have more on this topic, 4A4?
If, would you, would you mind if he speaks? That's all I have to say.
You're his attorney, if you want him to speak, that's your call, not mine.
Understood.
But he's more than, I'll allow him to speak if you wish him to.
I would.
Thank you. To Jay Whiting about my brother, when, when the sting happened, I was in shock, I was in, I was literally in shock, I honestly didn't know what was going on, what's, what was happening. The news article really made it sound like TopStar was selling weed in a gas station. My, our gas station is successful, I didn't need to sell weed to make it. So, yes, I'm not going to say my brother was with the wrong crowd, no, no, he was knowing what he was doing, him and his two buddies, young kids, not doing, not knowing what they were doing, stupid things, but it wasn't, if they were buying or selling weed, I wasn't, it wasn't for me, or how the news article made it sound like TopStar was selling THC weed, no. I literally, if you were in shock, I was in shock, I was in, I was depressed for a whole two months, like, what is going on? Like, where is this coming from? Why, I mean, being hit, like, whoa. What I'm trying to say is, I had nothing to do with it, I didn't even know about it. Yes, I know my brother was smoking, but not to the extent where selling, no, I honestly didn't know about it. And did I profit from it? No. I had nothing to do with it, the business didn't need to sell weed to make it, we were, thank God, we got our businesses O9, we're doing well, we've been doing well, so that's all I have to say, is like, I know the newspaper sounded like TopStar was selling it, but we were not selling, man, we had nothing to do with it. Me, personally, as a business owner, I didn't need to sell it.
I appreciate your comments and candor.
Of course.
Okay, Mr. Attorney, what's your name again?
Benjamin. Benjamin Shield.
Do you prefer Benjamin, Mr. Shield?
I do, yes, Benjamin.
Okay. Benjamin, you already established that this is a family-run business, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Question, did the brother work for this business?
He did at the time, yes.
Okay. So when we have employees of liquor stores that sell to juveniles or underage, the license holder in them cases, in every case, same with tobacco, is held responsible for the consequences of the employee action. So, do you have anything else on 4A4, and is there any questions from council? Mr. Delaney?
Just one question. The notes that we have said there was a compliance check filed in 2022, we have any details on when that happened, or?
August of '22.
August of '22.
Oh wait, that was a moratorium, November of '22, three months after the moratorium was put, put in place, was the compliance check failure. Mr. Thompson?
Mayor, if I could, could I ask just a couple, couple questions?
Yes.
Benjamin, just so I'm clear, my understanding is, there was a citation issued for violating the moratorium, it was prosecuted by the county attorney's office, and you're saying that the court ended up dismissing that case?
I am saying that, yes. I do have the 3001, which was filed with the court back on October 12th, 2023, and I can provide that as well.
Okay. And then, other than that, has TopStar failed any other compliance checks? None?
No. No.
What did you call a form from October 12th, '23?
I'm sorry, what was that?
You called it something from October 20...
It's, it's called a 3001, it's when prosecution determines that it's in the best interest of justice to dismiss the case.
Okay.
That was brought on behalf of...
Well, that, that's a point I'd like to make, it was not a judicial determination, it was the prosecution's office that decided not to prosecute the case. The second point that I would add is that the state disagrees with that particular prosecutor, it was 30 times the legal limit, we took photos and the state pharmacy board took a look at the packages and said it was illegal, and the city has talked with the county prosecutor about this case and their failure to prosecute it, and have told them that we weren't happy with that decision. The state agrees with our officers that the package was illegal.
So clarification, Mr. Reynolds, for my notes here, the, the item of the compliance fail was a Delta-9 illegal product that was 30 times over?
I do not know what, if it was Delta-8, Delta-9, or Delta-10.
Okay.
But we do know that it was beyond the limits of what was allowed to be sold.
By...
Per the state.
By how many times, 30 times?
30 times, 30 times the legal limit. And the other point is, is it wasn't a judicial determination, it was a prosecutor's determination not to prosecute the case.
Okay.
If I can make one note on that as well, during the course of the trial, when the motion to dismiss was filed by Sinéd's defense attorney at the time, the judge did say that the prosecutor was given 15 days to provide additional evidence to the court, or the court would make that decision to dismiss, and then when that time was up, it's my understanding that that is when the prosecutor made the decision to pull the case, or just, I should say, dismissed the case.
Okay.
What do you think?
Questions? Mr. Delaney?
So the court case was, revolved around the November 22 compliance check?
November 17th was the compliance check of '22, and the, the moratorium ordinance went in, in effect August of '22.
Then the court case was the November 17th?
The court case was...
Was it about the November 17th compliance check?
Correct. Correct, yes.
As a point of clarification, it, the case was brought in September of 2023, and went through, I'm sorry, February 2023 through September 2023.
Any other questions from council? Mr. Thompson, questions?
Mr. President, no questions, my recommendation, I'm not sure which way the council wants to go, but rather than make the final decision here tonight, I think you should direct staff to prepare a resolution supporting whatever decision you want to make at that time, so we can prepare an adequate resolution, set forth the reasons why you're making the decision.
Okay. I, I have one question for our legal counsel, and by all means, if council has questions, now would be that time. If I owned a tobacco store or a liquor store, and was buying products from a supplier that were illegal to sell, that would fall on the, the owner of the business purchasing? Is the owner's on the, the business to purchase legal products?
Well, two issues there. One, it depends on what you're talking about, a criminal case or a license application case?
Well, in this case, it would be a license application.
No, I understand that, but we have, because we're involved in a criminal violation here, you'd have to look at what the law says, and it says you have to intentionally sell it, and you can't prove that intent, it wouldn't be prosecuted. With respect to a license application, it's not, that's not the standard, I, it's reasonable, if the council feels it's reasonable for the licensee to take whatever precautions they need to make sure they're buying lawful product, that's a reasonable decision for the council to make. If you feel otherwise, reasonable minds can differ on some of these things, so...
Councilor Whiting?
Staff, can you remind me on our THC license, we have a opportunity, it's a five-year window on a, on a violation, but after year three and four, they can purchase a license for more money, I think.
Provisional?
Provisional license, I think it was, can you weigh in on that a little bit?
Let me just pull up the city code here.
Sorry to catch you off guard.
And Madam Clerk, if you could speak into mic, that would be appreciated.
Sorry about that, Mayor and Council.
She didn't have anything to input yet, but if you want to look that up, we can move on, but...
Any other questions of council?
Well, if, if a resolution is called for, what's the next step after that? That's it?
Well, you could, you could, there could be a resolution to direct staff to prepare a resolution of denial based on the violations, or the lack of oversight, I guess, for making sure the product is legal. You could make a, there could be a motion to recommend approval, you could make a motion to, well, I guess that's your only two options at this point.
As far as the business owner, what's, what's their...
There, it depends on the outcome of what council action would be. If council action was to approve the license, they would have to take no action. If they, if we were to deny the license, they could challenge that legally, they could apply for potentially, we'll hear shortly, a provisional license, and try to not violate any compliance checks and laws, or they could wait until a five-year period and reapply. I think, I think I have that right, if staff or legal counsel want to correct me?
Mr. Mayor, the only thing I'm not sure of is the provisional license, I hadn't looked at the code yet on that, so I'm not sure about that.
If my memory serves, if I may, Mr. Mayor, if my memory serves me, at a four-year point, which would be in August of '25, if my math is correct, you could buy a provisional license through, through the process.
Would that be four years?
That would be the fourth year, I think.
Okay. Or they, or they could wait until five years have passed, and this is all contingent and predicated on us denying the license.
Right, I'm just, yeah.
Then, then you could just apply for a regular license, not a provisional, so, and I, I don't know the provisions of the provisional off the top of my head either, so... so. Mr. Reynolds, do you recall if we, uh, adopted the provisional aspects? I, I'm kind of thinking it's kind of moot to the point, because if we're going to approve, that, that provisional wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't. The, the provisional won't apply. If we're to deny, it may apply, um, depending on what their actions would be. Do they, you know, maybe they don't want a provisional, maybe they want to challenge it in court, whatever. Um, so that would be, maybe they want to wait five years. It's pretty much their ball court at that point. I just can't recall the provisional.
Yeah, it might have been three or.
Yeah, I don't recall myself either, so.
I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay.
So we, we would need to go back and take a look.
Might just be a matter of waiting a few more months. It might just be a matter of waiting a couple more months and getting to that provisional point where you buy a provisional, uh, THC license, which I'm not sure what the standard is. We're trying to figure that out.
Yeah, and I'm not under the, the THC code, its, um, ordinance. I'm not seeing it under the license specifically as a provisional. I don't see anything specifically stating a provisional license. Um.
If I remember, I believe when you guys passed the provisional, I was here and you were stating, it was two, three, four, in each time, each year, if it's two, it was 5,000. Three years, the license would be three, uh, 3,000 for two, for, if it was under two years, 3,000 for three years. For, uh, four years, you would pay 2,000, and it was, and after the five years, it would go back to the 500. If I'm not wrong, I'm not sure.
Do you recall a date to that meeting?
Uh, I think it was in January of 2023 when that passed.
I, I would prefer that we have the opportunity to go back and look at the statute and see what was passed.
Right.
Inform counsel as to what that was. That really doesn't impact the decision here. Uh, your decision may trigger responses from the applicant, uh, and that would have to fall on, you know, in the confines of the ordinance, obviously. But, um, we will get that information for you in the coming days, uh, and if that's something that the applicant decides to do, and if they, uh, actually fall within the guidelines, that's up to, to the applicant.
Wishes of counsel?
Do we have to do them separately?
Yes. We are on 4A4.
Uh, 4A4. I lost it. All right, regarding 4A, 4A4, uh, make a motion to direct staff to prepare a resolution of denial for consideration at the next meeting?
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Motion is made by Counselor Lara and seconded by Counselor Contreras. Is there discussion on the motion, Mr. Whiting?
I would like to, you know, codify that we're going to be, bring back the information on the, uh, provisional portion, so we have that information in front of us for, uh, when we, when we vote on this.
Okay. I think, uh, I think it was clear that staff said they would be getting that information in the next couple of days for us.
Just codify it, yeah.
So we'll have that for the follow-up, follow-up meeting on this item. Any other discussion on the motion? Mr. White, Mr. Delaney?
So clarification, we're voting for the resolution on whether to deny or?
Voting, the, the motion is to direct staff to prepare a resolution of denial, um, for the TopStar Market THC license application based on the violation that occurred on 11/17/22.
Then when that comes back for vote, then we look at the provisional, we get the provisional details.
The provisional doesn't affect your vote.
The provisional is really, um, options for the applicant, um, providing that this motion would pass.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, so we are now going to move to 4A6. That is the denial of THC license for Nicoret Tobacco LLC. And this one. Mr. Lara?
Go ahead, were you going to say something?
I was going to say, what was the violation on, on this one?
Yeah, is it the same one? That's my question.
No.
Well, it has to be a different location, so.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah. Do you want to address, uh, sorry?
Go ahead.
Do you want to address the, uh, violation, uh, for the, for this location?
Sure. Nicoret Tobacco LLC.
For, for Nicoret, um, what happened is when they hit up TopStar for the, um, when they came in, when the police officers came in and checked out what I had for THC products, they went down to Nicoret and they seen that I had, um, THC products, and they advised that we take everything out, out of the, out of the, this place, and which we did. That same day, we took everything out. Um, the problem with Nicoret was, um, that same month, um, they had a, uh, compliance checks for tobaccos, selling tobacco to underage, which my brother-in-law failed. He sold to an underage person. Yes. And in, in, in the police finding, it did say that the police, uh, stated that, um, when they came in, they seen the THC and they advised us to take it out, and which we did for Nicoret Tobacco. So, but for TopStar, what happened is, I, I believe is, no.
Yeah, just Nicoret, yeah, let's keep bringing Nicoret. Well, thank you.
If I may, I would like to add one comment. This, since 2018, um, this has been the only incident, and there's been no other incidents of any failed compliance checks, um, concerning Nicoret.
What was the date of the compliance failure on Nicoret Tobacco?
I believe it, it was in December.
Coincided with the other one, didn't it?
December of 22?
Yes, yes.
I believe they were a month apart, if I'm not wrong. Uh, the TopStar was first, and then the compliance check with the tobacco was a month later.
So it'd be December.
Yes.
December of 2022.
22.
Mayor and counsel, actually, the compliance check was done October 17th of 22 is when E-Sig or Nicoret Tobacco failed.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that was after our
That was underage.
Our moratorium and our.
Before our THC compliance check was done.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And does our, when you're, when you're selling multiple products, so you're selling tobacco, you're selling alcohol, you're selling THC, now they're, if there's a violation in one area, it affects the other areas?
No, when they do compliance checks, on this evening of October 17th, they didn't do just tobacco. They tested all the businesses for both alcohol and tobacco. So if our license holder was an alcohol-only, they just tested for alcohol. If they were a license holder for both alcohol and tobacco, they were tested for both. So depending on what the license holder was, and they com- did all compliance checks for all our license holders.
Okay, what's the penalty for the first, uh, compliance check failure for a tobacco-only establishment?
Um, let me pull, I have the ordinance up here, just a second. I have a lot of screens open at the moment.
Mr. Bill, I'm sorry, while the clerk's checking for that, just to answer your first question, the, the code provision for THC does say a basis for a non-denial is failing a compliance check for THC or a tobacco product. So that in your code, that is a
Okay.
Proper basis.
That's where I was going with it.
Yeah, I thought so, yeah.
Uh, it causes.
Yep.
So, so if you were a standalone tobacco establishment, didn't sell THC, didn't sell alcohol, would you lose your tobacco license for five years for one failed compliance check?
No. No.
No.
The, currently.
So we're loo- we're looking at it that since you have the privilege of selling these other items, if you're not responsible for this one, you're probably not responsible for the other.
That was the conversation.
Okay.
Correct. Our THC says that if you sell, in the, if you've had a failure within the last five years of tobacco.
Right.
Then there's no THC license. Um, the fine for a failure of a tobacco license compliance check, the first one, we have just raised those fines. And that's a thousand-dollar fine and a one-day license suspension, and that's as long, um, it does say that, however, the day suspension will be suspended for a year on condition that both the licensee and his employees have no further incidents. So that's what the fine is.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Whiting?
Well, thank you. Uh, as I recall the conversation, for those at home, um, we were having a lot of underage selling of tobacco and, I think, alcohol at the time. And the problem was, is that we were trying to find a way to put some teeth in our rules, you know, say, how do we get these establishments to comply? And we said, hey, here's an opportunity with THC. If they want to sell THC, they're going to be darn sure that they're not going to sell to kids. And this is why you're here, and this is why we're, we put this ordinance the way we did, is so that THC is, is licensed, is, is where you want to be. And your standards have to be at the level where you're not selling to kids every time, every time. And that's why the ordinance is written how it is. And that's what, that was our conversation.
And on any product, be it tobacco, alcohol.
Right, well, that proves that you aren't responsible to sell to, to youth, so.
Right. All right.
One comment?
Sure, go ahead.
I, I should say, Sinad would like to make a comment on the, his understanding of selling to minors and how important he understands that to be, so you can.
Since that happened, um, I did talk to Heidi, um, and in, on our conversation, she did mention there is a training online, and she did send it to me, and I made sure that all of them who works with me, brother, brother-in-law, uncle, they actually took the training to watch and learn, to pay attention when, so, to be able not to sell to underage kids, because.
You gotta make that business culture part of your, your business.
Hundred percent. And that is my main point, is, okay, we sold to underage once, it does not need to happen, it cannot happen again. I told them, look at me, I'm fighting for this now. I mean, I've been fighting for, for almost a year now. Why do you guys put me through this, all this, all this pressure? You know, we gotta be a hundred percent at this. We gotta be committed, so.
We feel the same way.
A hundred percent. I get it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, questions of, any questions from counsel? Okay, what's the wishes of counsel? Counselor Contreras?
I'd like to also direct staff to prepare a resolution of denial for THC license for Nicoret Tobacco LLC.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Whiting. Motion was made by Counselor Contreras. Discussion on the motion?
No.
Discussion, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Like to, Mr. Thompson?
Uh, Benjamin, could you leave that picture that, anything that you want the council to be part of the record? Could you just leave it with the city clerk and?
Of course, yes.
Whatever, whatever you have that you think's important, just leave it with the city clerk. Thank you.
And thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll take a moment here while they do their paperwork.
And I can hand this to.
Clerk is right on the end there. Thank you. Item number seven, recess for Economic Development Authority meeting. Is there a motion? Mr. Lara?
I'll make a motion to recess to the Economic Development Authority meeting.
Is there a second? Motion by Mr. Lara, seconded by Mr. Delaney. Any discussion on the motion? Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We are in recess.
I call to order the Shakopee Economic Development Authority meeting for February 6th, twel- um, 2024. Staff, if you could please make role, make note of our role. Just thought, first on our agenda here. Second, um, approval of the agenda. Is there any changes by staff? No, we're good?
Tony has his hand up.
Oh.
I'll make a motion, Madam President, to approve the agenda.
Uh, thank you.
Second.
And a second, so we have a motion by, um, Lehman and a second by Delaney. Um, um, any discussion, discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Um, number three, consent business. We have our EDA minutes and two decertifications, yes.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I will second that, but I want to make sure that people know that we're decertifying TIF districts, so, uh, they are no longer TIF districts, so that's two of them.
Done.
That's great.
Good, thank you. All right, so we have a motion and a, um, second. Um, any more, um, discussion, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, now we are, number four, general business. We have a lease agreement up for renewal. Is it renewal? Yes.
Madam President, Board members, this is a lease agreement for one of our longtime tenants in River City Center for CA Nails. They've agreed to stay another five years. Um, and we've modified their lease. They had a very complicated sharing percentages. We've gone back to the standard square foot rent to make it easier for everybody.
Perfect. Okay. Any questions? Go ahead, sir.
Uh, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the lease with CA Nails from March 2024 through February 2029.
We have a motion, a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Um, yes, sir, question here.
Madam President, the only question I had is the terms of this contract, reading this Jan- March of '24, and going forward, we have the prices, and, but my question is, how does that compare to prior?
To prior. Mr. Kurski?
Um, Madam President, Board members, so they're, this year, they'll be paying the same rent that they paid this past year, and then it goes up every year.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kurski.
Thank you, sir. All righties, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, last, we have our reports on, um, number five, our EDA, um, bill, bill list. Um, any questions on that? Okay, seeing none, number six.
Make a motion, we adjourn to Wednesday, March 6th, 2024, for the EDA.
Thank you. We are adjourned. Thank you.
A vote on that motion?
Oh, sorry, um, we have, so we have a motion and we had a second. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Got a little, sorry.
We got it.
All right, we're adjourned to Wednesday, March 6th, 2024. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll reconvene the Shakopee City Council meeting. That takes us to item 9A1, monthly financial review. Mr. Finance Director?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Uh, tonight, uh, is our financial report, uh, which is financial results through December. Uh, these are preliminary results, as we'll be posting journal entries and, uh, adjusting for, uh, payables and receivables over the next few weeks. Uh, so these amounts will change. Uh, none of our financial numbers have been audited at this point in time. Uh, our audit is currently scheduled for the third week of April. Um, our final numbers and the audit report is typically presented in June, so still months before, um, everything is finalized, but this will give you kind of an indication of where we're at today. Uh, the slide shows the general fund through, uh, December, our preliminary results, so that we ended positive for the year, uh, which always makes this presentation a little bit more easier. Uh, the fourth column, uh, shown here was, is the budget balance remaining, which is showed as the budget balance remaining, shows the preliminary 2023 budget variances. Uh, in total, uh, for revenues, we're at 115% of budget, uh, or a positive 4.9 million, uh, and expenditures are under budget at 98%, or 525,000. percent, or five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in, in terms of dollars. The net positive for the year is five point four million. In all likelihood, that number will probably come down a little bit, but definitely a very strong year financially. And then I do have slides that kind of cover both the revenues and expenditures. So the majority of our positive budget variance was on the revenue side, about four point nine million, starting with taxes, which is primarily property taxes. We do have one additional final settlement in January that has not been posted, but we're at about ninety-eight percent of budget. Currently, collections for the year for property taxes are about ninety-eight point one percent. The difference represents both valuation adjustments and unpaid property taxes. Revenues will increase when the city records that final tax settlement along, along with the fourth quarter cable franchise fee, which were not posted at the time we ran these numbers. For special assessments, we changed how we account for those towards the end of the year, which I think will make more sense in the long run. So instead of showing a negative amount and then netting them, netting that together when we collect, we actually separated the expenditure and the revenue. No impact on the dollar amounts, just easier to follow, but that explains why there's a budget difference, variance in that, in that line item. Licenses and permits are exceeding the budget amount and are ahead of last year, primarily a result of building permit revenue. In twenty twenty-three, the city received twenty-three commercial, permits for twenty-three commercial buildings, one apartment, forty-seven townhomes, and a hundred and thirty-two single-family homes. Total permit value was four hundred and five million in twenty twenty-three, which is up from three hundred and sixty million in twenty twenty-two. Intergovernmental is currently ahead of our budget targets. There are a couple of grants that weren't included as the budget, in the budget numbers, a hundred and fourteen thousand related to the traffic safety officer grant, and then a hundred thousand for the Emerald Ash Borer program. Charges for services, this was actually under budget in twenty twenty-two, but you can see this year, we ended up ahead of budget. We had five hundred thousand for the Shakopee Public Utilities Pilot Agreement, that were more than our budgeted amount. And then we've also seen an uptick in recreational revenues from the community center, ice arena, and sand venture. Miscellaneous includes investment earnings. I'll talk about this a little bit more when we get to the investment slides, but currently, we have a large unrealized gain, which is reflect, which is reflected in that amount shown there, too. For expenditures in total, we're at ninety-eight percent, which is about five hundred and twenty-five thousand below budget. We had six departments that were slightly over. However, the overages are anticipated to only have a minor impact on our overall results. None of those six departments exceeded their amounts by more than six percent, so relatively close. The city clerk department, I'll just kind of cover those six departments I went over. The city clerk department exceeded their budget primarily as a result of that special election we had, that we didn't anticipate when we had budgeted. Facilities has currently exceeded the budget amount, primarily a result of building maintenance costs as well as utility costs. Fire is currently exceeding the budget amount, result of supplies, uniforms, equipment maintenance, utilities, and training expenses. So kind of across the board. The building inspection department, that was primarily the result of the purchase of the Ford Lightning, which was planned to come from building permit revenues, and then costs related to the Tyler software programming for rental inspections. Park maintenance, that was also over, but that was primarily related to the Emerald Ash Borer tree removals. That was funded through a hundred thousand state grants. So when you account for that revenue, that department would have been within the budget allotment. And then recreation expenditures are currently over as a result of credit card fees, utilities, and building maintenance repairs. With recreation expenditures, I didn't, didn't dig too deep, but I looked at the, kind of the past two years. And we are seeing a little bit of an uptick on building maintenance in the past couple of years. So kind of a result of a facility just getting a little bit older. The areas that came in under budget, like planning, police, engineering, and fleet, those departments all had open positions during the year, which led to those savings. And then the mayor and council budget, it was primarily a result of less dues paid in, in twenty twenty-three. We did not pay dues for the municipal legislative commission, suburban rate authority, and the United States Conference of Mayors. And then unallocated, that includes seventy-five thousand in contingency funds that were not spent in twenty twenty-three. So the previous slide shows the general fund currently at five point million, five point four million ahead of, in twenty twenty-three. As mentioned, we haven't really dug fully into the numbers, so there will be adjustments. But I can give you kind of the best guess of where we might be at, knowing that these numbers will probably swing several hundred thousand by the time we have our final audit numbers. But in addition to payables and receivables, there are a couple of fund balance adjustments. The first one for committed fund balance related to building permit revenue. That adjustment would be to increase that committed fund balance for building permit revenues that still have open permits, which would set some money, set aside money for future building inspection costs and related programs. That amounts to about three hundred, or about three hundred thousand. Then our fund balance policy requires the city set aside thirty-five to fifty percent of general fund operating expenditures. So based on the twenty twenty-four budget, if we want to be at fifty percent, that would require us to set aside about a one point three million.
Excuse me. That would take us to fifty percent?
That would take us to fifty percent. And that's where we've been at the last, well, at least the last three years. So it has been, so net those numbers together, we'd add about, have about three point eight million. So, you know, picture about three to four million in available balance. It has been the city's past practice to put that excess general funds towards one-time expenditures, specifically unfunded capital needs. So we'll be circling back once we firm up these numbers with, with a recommendation. But it'll likely be the capital improvement fund where we, we've seen an area where we need a little more funding. So also including the council packet, fourth quarter investment report, this slide shows the interest earnings. Probably familiar with this chart, but it's in comparison with the previous four years, the orange line being twenty twenty-three. We ended the year at about two million, which is up about a million from last year. So the city's investment earnings definitely benefited from higher interest rates. I'd also say that, that two million is probably the floor for this year, twenty twenty-four, just based on our current investment mix. So I would expect this line to be even steeper when I look at this chart this year, twenty twenty-four. And then the next slide would be that unrealized, or the market, market adjustment for, of investments at the end of the year, again, the orange line being twenty twenty-three. In twenty twenty-two, you recall, we had a pretty significant unrealized losses. Interest rates kind of shifted upwards at the end of that year, where in twenty twenty-three, we've seen rates decline, which have resulted in a unrealized gain of about two million this year. Just a reminder, this adjustments on, on paper, as we do intend to hold all investments to maturity, and, and it's only recorded once a year on December thirty-first. But when you combine both the interest earnings and the unrealized gain, we're at a total investment gain of about four million for the year. And then I just wanted to do one quick slide on, on, on rates, because I maybe pay attention to this a little bit more than, than others, just because it correlates so much with our, our investment earnings. But this shows the, the treasury rates from one month to ten year. In December, we saw a really significant shift downward in rates with the market kind of anticipating the Fed to reduce rates in twenty twenty-four. What's interesting is one-month rates are still much higher than the five to ten-year rates, so the yield curve is still inverted. There hasn't been much of a shift in the short-term rates, but rates, once you get six months, ten years, they're pretty much at their lowest points in the past six months. An example, you know, from the chart here, five-year rate is at four point zero one percent, which is pretty significantly below the six-month rate of four point eight seven percent. So that would explain why we're seeing some of those unrealized gains. Can't predict the future, but what like, what this likely means that in twenty twenty-four, we'll probably see unrealized gains again. And we'll probably see that rates from one year in, so our, you know, one-month rates, for example, will be much lower at this time next year. We're probably at least a year away from seeing any impact on city investment earnings, just based on our investment mixes. We have about an average maturity of about two years. But moving into twenty twenty-five, we're, we'd have to revisit where we're at for investment earnings. So with that, I can stand for any questions you might have.
Questions of council?
No, not for me.
Thank you.
We'll be stopping by for investment tips later.
Yeah, it was, what's interesting about fixed income is it's really just having the money and, and, and it's time and money, right? So the longer you can, typically, the longer you can invest out, the more you're going to earn. And the more money you have, the more you're going to make, because it's all just fixed rates that you're investing. And so there's not a, it's more of a, just maintaining a strategy versus any, any, any insider knowledge or anything that I, that I might have.
Well, and, and I'll say, if you wanted to be risky, we could probably make some more money. However, you could also lose a bunch, too. So our policy is the safety, liquidity.
The three.
Yeah.
Yeah. Safety, liquidity, and what was the third acro?
Yield. Safety, liquidity, yield, in that order. Yeah. So, so we're obviously restricted to what we can invest in through state statutes, which are very restrictive of what the city can invest in. And we, our own policy is even more restrictive. Certainly want to earn as much as we can within those limitations, because any dollar we earn is just a dollar less we have to levy, right?
Right. All right. Thank you, sir. Item nine B1, monetary donation for aquatic programming.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I am here tonight to ask you to accept a monetary donation from Sue Westegard for our women's water safety program. We have our fifth session going on right now, and we started last Sunday. And Sue is here and would like to say something before we continue.
Hello there, Ms. Elverson.
Mayor, members of the city council, and members of the audience. I'm Sue Westegard. I'm here to ask you to accept my donation in honor of my mom, Helen, to support our fifth water safety class. We started our water safety class last Saturday, last Sunday evening. We have twenty-five women registered, and we had twenty women show up to the class. So we had the shallow end of the pool pretty well full of people and teachers. You may not know it, but any remaining funds are earmarked for the kids' water safety day event. Last December, I went to the community center for that event to hand out information about our water safety class. A student from one of our very first classes was there with her husband, her son, and baby. It was so fun to see her making sure that her son was part of the water safety event. I sat down at a table with her husband, who was watching his son, and we were visiting. He shared with me how much the class had meant to his wife. He explained that he learned to swim in a whip, in a river, and just managed to keep his head above water. He said his wife would come home and teach him what she had learned in the class. Of course, once the event was over, he had to get into the open lane of a pool, in the pool, and show me what he learned. I applauded. It was pretty amazing. This is one of the things that I had hoped would come from this water safety class, women teaching their families. Thank you for accepting my donation.
Thank you. And I apologize. I had, I looked down and I got the wrong name. It was your mother, so Sue Westegard. Thank, thank you.
I would have answered mom's names, too.
Mr. Whiting?
I'd like to start by making a motion to approve resolution R. twenty twenty-four tactic zero one five, accepting a monetary donation of fifteen hundred dollars from Sue Westegard. And that's for our women's water safety program and other things. So.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Councilor Contreras, motion by Mr. Whiting. Discussion on the motion?
Just a, a thank you.
Yeah. Huge thank you.
Very good. Any discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Nine C1 was deleted for a future meeting. Ten A, city bill list. Any questions of the city bill list?
No questions.
City bill list, questions?
No, we're good.
Okay. Item ten B, liaison administrative reports. Which end did we start at last time?
I think it's the first end of the month ago.
Keep, I use, council keeps me honest. Mr. Delaney, go ahead.
All right. One sixty-nine coalition. Our legislative reception will be at the Capitol. We'll be in awards, people that didn't show up to the meeting we did have. So that will be happening. Actually, it's happening this month. I don't have my calendar per to give you the exact dates. As far as Spock, one thing went, I like from the Spock meeting is the AMI install. Asset residents, please keep in mind that all water meters are the property of Spock. The meters may be removed or replaced when deemed necessary. I know they ran into some issues recently where they did get resolved, but the resident did not want to, just going kind of back and forth of, why do you need to come in here and, you know?
Remind us all what AMI is. I know what it is, but.
Just remote monitoring for your, your water and your electricity. We're getting away with the, the meter readers that used to come around. This is basically a cost savings, but also it's more efficient this way.
Automatic meter, something.
Yep.
Aye.
Well, it's basically remote, remote monitor, remote, remote access to your water.
Automated meter installation.
That's, we'll go with that. But again, let's keep that in mind. Spock will work with you the best of their ability to set up dates and times to come in. Since that did happen, it did, we, we realize we don't have any penalties in case we can't get in to, to get those meters installed. So that will be coming up. There will be penalties involved. I mean, we discussed phone calls, at least letters, three, three letters initially, two phone calls, a final letter, then monetary penalties to try to get that closed off, and potentially the water being shut off at some point. Just to get some action to get in there and, and make that happen. So I'm just asking the residents, keep that in mind. Yeah.
Do you know how long it takes to?
Well, actually swap it out. They have a two-hour window, but it doesn't take two hours. It usually takes less than an hour.
So are these going inside the house?
It'll be inside the house. But you will have, they have an opt-outside policy also. So if you're, I know some people are concerned about, you know, radiation, EMI, all that wonderful stuff. They will have a outside, outside option for that monitoring.
I have a question on that. Since I've already had a meter replaced in my basement once, not too long ago, and I can't remember what the reasoning was. But anyway, it's a, looks almost like a plastic one. And there's a wire that goes outside to this little black box on the side of the house. And that's what they read it for the water.
Yep.
Any of that change? Or I'm already there?
No, you're not there yet. You still get the, you'll get the, the, the actual electronic equipment, or the electronics coming in as far as the monitoring.
You still need a person to come and read that, that's, that monitoring site. This you don't.
This will be autonomous. Somebody can just literally get your phone up and kind of look at it, which is cool for some people.
So I can drive around town and take somebody else's bill that's less than mine?
Well, we'll, we'll try to hack that.
Worth a shot, right?
We'll be secure. So that's as far as Spock. As far as miscellaneous, they get a chance to visit Benedictine for their monthly resident meeting. I know that some other, they're asking city staff to get a chance to stop by their meetings. Had some great questions which city staff answered. I did not know we had a xylophone out there, but it was backwards. So they do find a lot of things. It was a great meeting, talking to residents. Let's see, chamber meeting, our wonderful public works got an awards, which was really cool. A lot of the members of staff and the council and mayor were, were there. Let's see what else. Went to municipal legislative commission meeting. That was my first time attending. I had some really neat topics for the housing. I really enjoyed the EMS. Actually, I had a chance to talk afterwards. That was a really, really interesting discussion. That's it.
Very good. Thank you.
Activities.
Mr. Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also attended the chamber annual meeting. I wasn't able to stay for the five-hour meeting, but the whole, I stayed for at least two and a half, I think. So sorry about that. But a great meeting. And again, yeah, Public Works got awards, and we had some legislative updates, and great things happening in Shakopee at the chamber. MVTA met on the thirty-first, and we adopted a, a new leadership. Dan Keely from Burnsville is the new chair. Stacy Crakes from Savage is the vice chair. And Paul Essler from Rosemount is the secretary. And that's about all I have.
Very good. Thank you. Councilor Contreras?
Thank you, Mayor. I do not have an actual liaison, but I also did attend also the annual chamber meeting. So congrats to Public Works.
And Councilor Contreras was at the municipal legislative commission?
Oh, yes. The breakfast.
Thanks for coming to that.
Thank you.
It was stated that I was at the chamber thing. I, I missed that. I did have a conflict that day. Mr. Lara, you're up?
There was a school board meeting on the twenty-fourth. However, nothing major was, there's nothing major to report. They took bids for school building maintenance was maybe the biggest thing. But other than that, I unfortunately also had schedule conflicts to attend those two events, unfortunately, as much as I would like to have attended. But hopefully this next year.
I think we saw an application come through, or packet of some downtown event that's happening on First Avenue. I can't remember what it was called, but. But anyway, I digress. Good work. Good work.
Thank you.
So my report, Wednesday, twenty-fourth, we had the park and rec director interview that I, Mr. Reynolds and I sat into. So my report, uh, Wednesday, twenty-fourth, we had the parking rec director interview that I, Mr. Reynolds and I sat into. Um, Friday, January twenty-sixth, I attended the MLC breakfast in Plymouth, went over legislative agenda, SRO, text change, um, housing affordability, medical response oversight, local control. Counselor Contreras and Delaney also attended. Wednesday, January thirty-first, attended the Shakopee Midwakaton Sioux Community inauguration of newly-elected business council, Chairman Cole Miller, Vice Chairwoman Natasha Corsoli, and Secretary Treasurer, Ath- Ashley Cornforth. Offered our congratulations, best wishes, and look forward to continue our partnerships on items of mutual interest. Uh, earlier today, I attended the, uh, MLC, uh, League of Minnesota Cities Legislative Update and Overview. Um, much more involved than the, uh, MLC. They have a whole host of things going on, and it was pretty interesting to listen to all the various things that are happening at the state level. Um, when the link comes out to that meeting, I'm going to give it to Mr. Reynolds to share with, uh, rest of council. Uh, it's pretty informative. It was pretty good, actually. Um, where was I? Some of the items on the League of Minnesota Cities was the adult-use cannabis. There's some talk of changing some of the, the positions from the medical cannabis side to the legal THC side. They don't have the staffing currently for the inspection of the public side, and, uh, so they're looking at combining some of that stuff. Um, bonding, yeah, it's kind of, it's a bonding bill, but there's, it's kind of limited. I, I can't remember the numbers. Um, anyway, the link will have all that information for you. Duty disability, EMS, employment issues, housing, local control, LGA, local sales tax, uh, sales tax exemption on construction materials. Um, that's not, that would be for like cities and stuff like that. SRO came up again, same, uh, issue, multiple entities, water and sewer infrastructure. Um, and, you know, we, we've got to be cautious on some of these things that could potentially be unfunded mandates, and, and that's kind of the league's position is, you know, if they want to do some of these things, they, they need to pay for them instead of putting it onto, to us. Fortunately, our sewer treatment is not locally owned and operated. It's the Met councils. But there's issues with the, uh, after-process solids and how they're utilized in different states, and the state of Minnesota is looking at ours too, so. Uh, let's see here. Prior to the meeting, participated in a police civil service interview process tonight, right before the council meeting, so. Mr. Reynolds, do you have anything?
Uh, just one thing, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm pleased to note that, uh, our annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended of December thirty-first of twenty twenty-two qualifies for the GFOA's Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Uh, that is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting, and it represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. Hats off to our finance team. Another great year.
Mr. Reinhardt, take a bow. Alright.
Great job across the board. Um, they are the, the backbone for everything we do.
How many years consecutively in the city of Shakopee? Because I remember going back to, uh, it's.
Thirty-six or thirty-seven.
Yeah, that's awesome.
At forty, I think you get a badge, so.
Just really quickly, I, I, it's important to note that, that not every community gets that. Matter of fact, this is the only community of the four or five that I've worked for that has ever actually got that award. That is an impressive achievement, and it was something in some of the communities I had always been working towards. But, so it's not, it's not an easy thing. It's not a given thing.
It is a great accomplishment. We've been doing it for many decades. Hats off to you, Mr. Money Man. Obviously, they didn't see the printer and the paper that I shipped over to you, but, uh, just a joke. Um, very good. Good work. Keep it up. Any other business from council? I think that's where we're at. Let's see here. Yep, other business. Alright, Mr. Whiting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, February twentieth, seven P M.
Second? By Mr. Delaney, motion by Mr. Whiting. Any discussion on the motion? Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.